Welcome. Thanks for coming out. Let me get started this regularly scheduled meeting of the Kilbella Hills Board of Commissioners. If you would, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we usually do at the beginning of our meeting, if you would, have any thoughts, the folks were having a tough time tonight, whether it's in Ukraine or in Currituck or down the street, please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you so much. Great to see some folks in the audience. Great to see some uniforms out there as well. For those who don't know, I was a Boy Scout for many years. Eagle Scout. My father was an Eagle Scout. His father was an Eagle Scout, so always good to have folks in here for the Boy Scouts. Good to see you guys. Getting started, we've got the agenda before you. Everybody's taking a look. Any thoughts about that before we move forward?
Motion to approve the agenda is presented, Mayor.
Seconded that motion.
Excellent. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any votes, any? Motion carries. We have an agenda. First item on the agenda is public comment. You probably know the drill, but for folks who don't come out all the time, we'd like you to come up to the podium, tell us your name, where you live, and keep it to about three minutes, five minutes per group. I do have one person signed up, but after we go to that person, anybody's welcome to jump up there. Chris, Eric, there you are. I think you're hiding out there somewhere. Good to see you.
Good to see you. Chris, Mayor, I'm from 2001 South Proton Highway, which is the business of Ocean Atlantic Runoffs, and I'm one of the owners. And I just appreciate us talking about golf carts again tonight, although I'm excited to hear about the Eagle Scouts more. Thanks for hearing me out a couple of months ago and recognizing the use of these in the community and considering, you know, just having a good conversation about are they safe and useful in this area. There was the Manio notes I just wanted to mention. I looked at Manio and Duck and the notes that you have prepared for tonight, and I just really liked what Manio had. Wanted to add that to some support. Want to be available at any time if I can give expertise on a cart. I know there was the legal ramifications, and I thought they addressed that well in both of those towns. And I know that as a guy who runs bikes and baby cribs and things, there's always legal stuff. And I know, but you know, when we drive through First Flight in particular, we see that this is something that is well underway in all the towns on the Outer Banks and every coastal community. And so, again, I'm just glad we're talking about doing it safely. There was a couple of things that weren't mentioned by the other towns that I think are important safety features for golf carts. One is I think they should be electric carts and not gasoline. I mentioned that in my last presentation. I think there should be a high visibility rear triangle reflector. And I also think that the permit should be very clearly displayed on the windshield. And just wanted to add those couple of points and thanks for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, again, public comment. This is your chance. You also have a second chance at the end of the meeting. We do it twice here in Kilbella Hills, once at the beginning and once at the end. I'll give you a couple more minutes to gather courage. If you had a thought about any topic under the sun, this is that moment. Oh, see, I talked somebody into it. Mike, good to see you.
Good to see you, Ben. Council, my name's Mike Warway, 500 Burns Drive. I'm wearing part of a scout uniform, but I'm not speaking on behalf of the scouts at this time. But when I saw the agenda, the golf cart thing come up, it got me thinking about something else that I noticed in a big way this summer. It has all these electric bikes that are everywhere. Yeah, I don't know if there's been any talk about this. I haven't, well, I've watched the towns' meetings. But there's some really unsafe things going on with these electric bikes. I mean, the kids are riding them, young, you know, older, younger teenagers and that. And they're riding them acting like it's a bike, which technically bikes should be following the same rules as cars, but we know most of them don't. People don't stop on a bike at stop signs. But now these are bikes that are going 25, 30-plus miles an hour, and they still ain't stopping at stop signs and stuff. And I don't know what the answer is, but I've seen some things in my neighborhood. I live on a corner lot, right in front of a stop sign at a T intersection. I mean, I see cars going down there pretty fast, and I see bikes doing this. It just seems like only a matter of time before some really bad stuff's gonna happen. I'm just throwing that out there because I feel like it's worth thinking about. I don't know what you do, though. But thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for participating. We appreciate it. Oh, we have one more? Yes, please.
Jack McCombs, 3118 Bay Drive, Killdell Hill since 1997. I was a young man of only 59 when I retired here. Several months ago, I'm not sure how many months I dressed this board about e-bikes. And I considered it a real danger to the community. I'm not so concerned about the rolling stop sign issue, although that is an issue. What I'm really concerned about, a lot of people riding these e-bikes go from a fat tire bike where they're doing 7, 8 mile an hour. They've never been taught how to properly ride a bike. And all of a sudden, they jump up to a bike that'll go 20 to 25 mile an hour. They don't know any of the safety features of riding fast. They're using the multi-use pass constantly, but they don't know the etiquette to warn people when you approach them from the rear. And that's particularly dangerous. My wife and I walk quite often on the multi-use path on Bay Drive. And it really scares the dickens out of you when an e-bike that you don't hear coming from behind you all of a sudden passes you doing 15 to 25 mile an hour. It's very, very dangerous. Towns and cities, communities across the United States are struggling with the same issue. And I really would encourage you to talk to other government in the Outer Banks because you're gonna have to have a uniform approach to this problem. And it is a serious problem. Someone's gonna be seriously injured soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Yeah, we really appreciate it. A lot of expertise there as well. Often thinking about how crazy it must have been for folks when Model T ended up merging in with all the horses and buggies back in the day. That was terrifying. Seen some pictures from back then. Anybody else for a public comment? There's a famous photo where I look down the street and it's like all horses and buggies in New York City. That's like 1901. And then the next picture is 1911. It's all cars, a couple of horses left. Like, ooh, where'd all the horses go? They were on the lunch bus, apparently. Anyway. Last question, public comment after. Can sit over there for a minute. All right, we will close public comment. We have a section here for response to public comment. We appreciate the input about e-bikes. We've talked about it before. Yeah, we are definitely all always actively combing our fellow folks in municipal government across the nation and across the state and here in the county because we're kind of in uncharted territory, just like the folks with Model T were. How do you protect people from themselves, new technology and risky behavior come together like that? So, yeah, actively in that direction. And I appreciate why you guys bring that up. Any other comments?
I have a comment. Jack has a question. If you're comfortable chiming in on it. Would it be worth it to ask, after it'd be researched, create some simple, easy-to-read biking etiquette signs to put along the multi-use paths in town, something that could be on-brand with what we already have up, but something that at a glance, few words, maybe some illustrations that kind of can address some of the things Jack mentioned about letting people know when you're coming behind them, just basic safety technique to maybe just educate people on, you know, how to safely use e-bikes and regular bikes and interact between walking pedestrians and cyclists. Maybe something to just do some research and bring back to us. There's no rush. It's just something that may be worth doing.
Yep. We do a lot of educating in government, and that's certainly one. I'll just throw in another, just as well as throwing ideas around, my business, we use QR codes a lot. It really become popular during COVID, a great way for somebody really small to hook up to something that you can update as your best response might evolve over time. Plus, they're small and conspicuous, but give the information to folks. So, we're always open to ideas. All of our phone numbers are public and our email address is public. So, if you think of something in the middle of the night, shoot us an email. We'll continue the conversation.
I'll say that, Jack, if I could. I agree. I've seen it becoming a problem, especially, you know, in the same city you live in. But, and, you know, when a cyclist goes 20, they're usually on the road, right? 20 or more, they're usually not gonna be on a bike path or on a multi-use path. It's really for the slow-moving bikes. And it's been challenging. I think you're right. It needs to be a uniform solution with all the towns, you know, so we don't have different... You know, I think we all need to meet on that and try to figure out a more uniform plan for the electric bikes. And also, it's tricky, you know. It's tricky to gauge it. I find it, I find you see someone on a bike, you're like, okay, I got time to get out here. And then all of a sudden, you know, they're almost 30 sometimes, and they're on top of you. You know, usually, no helmets, of course. Obviously, you know what happens at, because you're a cyclist, you know what happens at 20 in a bike crash. 20 miles per hour is not pretty. So, yeah, there's, it's, there's a lot of wildness, you know. Cyclists, they play by the rules. They're usually in the street, and they're usually trying to, you know, follow all the rules of the road like a vehicle should. Yeah, you're seeing a lot of, you know, you're seeing these electric bikes being ridden in a reckless way. I am as well, so.
And there's the whole idea on the beach as well, not just on the sidewalk and the road. But when you see people not paying attention in the water and riding up on a park pack, that's probably something.
It's tricky.
I'll chime in on that a little bit too, because I've seen them in my neighborhood where they don't respect the stop signs. Another thing that I've seen is they'll go into a corner, you know, in the road, and they'll go to the inside. Well, there may be a car coming from the other way, and here they are head-on, you know. You mentioned something about BJ, about doing it uniformly throughout the whole area. And we were talking, Ivy and I were talking earlier about this. It may be something, Ben, that you could bring up at the mayor's meeting.
Good point.
And, you know, talk to the different mayors and see if you can get some sort of, you know, consensus there for them to work with their towns. And now, all of a sudden, you've got all the beach towns that are, you know, addressing it. Or at least you can at least bring it up and see what kind of response you get.
Yeah.
So, it's a thought.
This is my fellow mayor, Ben Kahuna, avid cyclist as well.
Oh, yes.
I'm sure he has. That might be a good area.
Yeah, I'll bring it up, and that's, you know, your mayor could be always looking for something to get sinker teeth into. Definitely. It's a challenging one, for sure. Yeah. You want to give law enforcement all the tools they need, but they can't be everywhere all the time.
That's right.
You know, we're a community, so we can wave people down and say, hey, just thought you might be thinking about what you're doing there. I'm an optimist, I think. Let's see, what else? Any other responsible comment before we move on? If not, I'm excited to have the first item of business be to recognize our soon-to-be Eagle Scout. If I could have you come up here and join us, I'd love to get a photo.
We're gonna go over there, but we got a microphone already. So, tell us a little bit about your project. I know projects are always fun. You get a bunch of people together. You think you're organized. What to do?
Well, I'd like to just start off by saying a good evening, everyone. I'm very, very happy to be here. For my Eagle Scout project, I built three benches for Mary Paul's Park down by Aviation Park. It was pretty straightforward. I'm happy to say that nothing too major happened, like, bad, in making these. The worst thing that happened is we thought that there was going to be a thunderstorm. There wasn't. And the very next Saturday, we came out and we finished assembling and putting them in the ground. So, that was a very, very good experience overall. And I'd just like to give a huge thank you to my scouts, my scout leaders, the town leadership, and to Mr. Ross, who I can see isn't in the audience today, but he was a huge help. I've heard many horror stories in terms of Eagle Scout projects and communication. And I'm glad they had someone who really helped me in that way. And also to all the citizens out here who may not know me, David Shepherd, and it's very nice to meet you. And I'd like to thank you for your continued support of scouts and the just great environment that you have made for us to truly thrive. Thank you.
Of course, it's a big deal that there's folks who might not know all about being an Eagle Scout, but as you probably imagine, a lot of requirements, a lot of challenges coming up out the way. How many years have you been in the Scouts?
I believe seven years by this point or so. So, it's been a long time coming.
If you find you're gonna be doing company as Eagle Scout, you probably know that already. And folks in the audience, they really don't know anything about Scouts. There's how many Eagle Scouts who want to do great things, astronauts, pilots, and all sorts of folks that make a big difference in the country and the world. So, no pressure. So, you have to make sure to fill out a really good form because this is a great learning experience to organize a bunch of people and accomplish something. We, on behalf of the community of the town of Kilbella Hills, we really appreciate what you've done, what you've donated to us, and create experiences for your fellow Scouts who can go and apply it here. So, with that, we've got a nice-looking little plaque here for a certificate that you can hang up. Board of Commissioners expresses its sincere appreciation for the volunteerism and support of our community and recognizes the outstanding accomplishment of David Shepherd in developing his Eagle Scout project in partnership with the town building and grounds staff. With pride, honor, and privilege, there on to a perempting, this 14th day of November, 2022. So, both Mayor and I, thank you so much.
Thank you.
If you want to get a photo, we'll, we'll air it up here.
Something to do, something like...
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Hey, Manio, you got your turn.
Very nice, very nice.
Yes, yes. And thanks to all the leaders for all your many years serving. We appreciate all you do with the young men in our community.
All right. Next item is item two, the Memorial Memorial Event Presentation. Jack, you're up. Pretty exciting story here as well.
So, we're at the beginning here? Okay. Again, Jack McCombs, Bay Drive. I put these up here, but I'm not gonna speak to every bullet. You can all read. Enable me to get through here in about five minutes. This past spring, I learned that the Air Force cycling team was going to do a ride from the Wright Memorial to the U.S. Air Force Memorial, which is just a short distance from the Pentagon. And they had nobody down here that understood the Outer Banks. So, I raised my hand and said, well, I know a little bit about the Outer Banks, and I cycle here. In fact, since I started cycling at age of 65, I've gotten out about 45,000 miles, and most of that is in Dare County. So, I said, I will do the coordination with the Park Service and with the various government authorities from here to Chesapeake, Virginia. And I was a little uncertain about how to start. And fortunately, I ran into Commissioner Ray, told me about it, and he said, well, you just have to go over and see Debbie. Well, I had made up my mind that I wasn't gonna, because over the years that I've lived down here, I know absolutely if I had a question about anything in Killdell Hills or the Outer Banks, go to Debbie, and Debbie will have the answer, or she'll get it for you really quickly. So, I went over and talked to her. And she set me up with the National Park Service, Wright Memorial. I met the right people down there. Then she organized a meeting here with Assistant Police Chief Dana, Lieutenant Carter, Charlie Allen, and Debbie. And I explained what it was about. And she quickly said, go ahead and coordinate this with the police department. And I did. That was the real start of it and made everything after that go very, very smoothly. I wound up coordinating with the Park Service, Kitty Hawk, Currituck County, and the city of Chesapeake. And everybody was absolutely, all the law enforcement agencies were just absolutely superb. Now, it is Air Force cyclists that are on this team, but they now include Space Force cyclists. And the Space Force, if you don't know this, is a department of the Air Force. It's organized underneath the Secretary of the Air Force. We had about 65 that started here. And then later on, in subsequent days, another 35 joined the ride. So, it was about 100 that went the full, went the distance up to the Air Force Memorial. Now, it's patterned after what is called RagBite. And you can see the definition of RagBite there. RagBite is the biggest mass cycling event in the world. It occurs in Iowa, and it lasts over seven days, and they have over 20,000 cyclists. The M2M organization, which is a part of the Air Force cycling team, they intend to pattern M2M after RagBite. Now, what I'd like you to see here is economic impact on the state of Iowa. About $25 million each year that they do RagBite. The start location and each overnight location, it has an economic impact of $3 to $5 million. Now, in the case of the Outer Banks, that impact would be mostly in the northern beach towns. Now, M2M management is gonna ramp up the number of cyclists very slowly because we're talking about a lot of people going through a lot of different jurisdictions. So, the team has to learn how to manage that number of cyclists. But equally, the towns and law enforcement agencies and all the jurisdictions, they have to learn how to cope with it. So, together, the two partners, and when I say partners, all the law enforcement agencies and the cycling team will learn. This is the forecast that they're using right now for 2023. And that'll be between 7 and 10 September this, next year. They think that economic impact on the Outer Banks will be $15,000 to $20,000. In 2029, they think the impact on the Outer Banks will be about $1 million. And in 10 years, $3 to $5 million, which is pretty significant. I think you would agree. The uncertainties are, so your, these forecasts are done with a lot of pluses and minuses. RagBite is in July. That's the summer months, okay? M2M will always be in September, which is the anniversary of the birth of the Air Force. Also, in Iowa, all the police jurisdictions close the roads as this massive number of cyclists go through. Now, there's a way to do that. They don't close it for hours and hours and hours. They send these cyclists through in waves, okay? So, they might send 2,000 through. In one wave, there'll be a stop so traffic can get through. Then they'll send the other wave. So, that is, these are the uncertainties of it. They expect in 2023, 100 to 200 cyclists. And this is, a local photographer was hired to take these pictures. A young woman called Chandler Tilley. She donated her time and her expertise to take these photographs. She also put a drone up in the air and watched the cyclists approach the Wright Memorial Bridge and go over the bridge. Chip Cowens of Outer Banks Bicycle was a big contributor. He kept his shop open very late on the 14th and then opened very early in the 15th to help the team that were having problems with their bicycles. And now, I'd like to present a photograph, a little gift, and I don't think it should be... If you can see the photograph here, if you look right in, you know, this man. This man right here, can you see this guy? That is a four-star general. He was, until last year, the chief of staff of the Air Force. And we had young airmen here, so we absolutely had the top-ranking people in the Air Force, right down to the lowest-ranking people in the Air Force. Thanks.
Thank you so much for that. That's exciting to know what the future holds with that inaugural event. And that's just like the military, take it nice and easy and be very careful and methodical and get it right. So, that's fantastic. I can imagine thousands of people going through Currituck with the lane closed. It'd be exciting to see. Yeah, I can't wait to see the drone shots, too. That's great. Love that. Anyway, thank you so much for your help with that, and thanks for, thanks for your help with the event as well. And look forward to next year already. All right. Next item on our agenda is ongoing business. We're gonna bring you... Next on our agenda is ongoing business, we're going to bring golf carts back up. You've seen all the things in the packet. The staff is going to get some guidance from us. We've been reviewing, able to review, like you said, the Manio ordinances and DUC, right? So did you have...
The reason for presenting those to you is you've kind of got mainstream Manio, which is what we've seen throughout the state. And then DUCs are unique and not requiring any type of regulations. So instead of just inundating you with ordinances, we figured these two can give you...
Kind of bookend it.
Right, and to give us guidance on what you'd like to see brought back, if anything.
Well, yeah, I think if I recall our last conversation, it was a relatively new topic for most of us, I think, at the time. Some of you guys know a little bit more about this than others, but I wondered if anybody wanted to chime in on how you felt about what you saw now versus then? Where do you like... Where do you think we ought to be going and what we can do to give the staff some guidance about next steps?
I will add one additional thing. The town of Manio's ordinance is very new. They just... Because if you recall during one of our conversations, we had discussed that DUCs was the only municipality that allowed golf carts. And over the last couple of months, Michael, what'd you say? The town of Manio adopted the ordinances in your packet. So that's the reason for that change from what I told you previously.
Right, gotcha. Things keep changing. Gotcha. That's certainly something I can bring up with the mayors tomorrow. I'll put that on the list as well.
That's what I would be curious about is how it's going in Manio.
Yep, I could definitely find that out and bring that back to you guys. It's kind of a double-edged sword. When I look at those rules, I often think of the phrase, should we just put a blanket statement that says obey all laws? Because there are things there that are sort of redundant. Yeah, of course, you can't break the speed limit no matter what you're in. So, you know, part of me wants to make it as simple as possible and really not do anything unnecessary at the same time. Where do we draw the lines about safety? And the same concerns too. I think that the public, at least all of them, the public is a sort of hand-wringing worry about all the bad things that can happen. Certainly, there's... You see young kids driving these things around. You see people doing reckless things. Of course, you know, people die in car wrecks all the time too. Anything you have, there's all sorts of ways to hurt yourself in this world. So, yeah, stuff to balance all those things out.
I'd be real curious about how... What Manio is experiencing once they put this in place, you know, and seeing what they've encountered, you know? Especially when you start talking about inspections and stuff like that.
Right, right.
It'll be interesting to see how that comes into play.
Right, yeah. It's the same thing we've mentioned about, you know, education too, that folks that own these things are going to be very curious and Googling up, what are the rules in Kill Bill Hills? Oh, there aren't any rules, so what do I do? So we have to weigh in in one way or another or it'll be kind of a free-for-all. So I guess now we're weighing in, they're not loud. So really, we've got to consider that as well, you know, what... If it were loud at all, where and all that sort of thing too. So have you all heard from owners of golf carts at all?
I have not heard from anyone.
Yeah, no. I only know one, but they others and hatters, so it doesn't really apply.
I've seen a lot of them, you know, in the neighborhood and stuff, and they're just going down the road.
Exactly, right.
Well, to be clear, some of those are the licensed. So low-seat vehicles, so those are...
Legal, yeah. Us laypeople can't tell the difference just looking at it that way.
Right. Because I know people... I actually have a family who drops their child off in one, but it's a licensed.
It's a license.
I mean, it's a licensed place.
Turn signals and all that.
Yeah, and I would love to see the electric. I mean, that is a piece of it that's appealing to me because I think people getting around town, you know?
Less carbon dioxide, better, yeah.
But I see the, you know, I see the permitting and the inspecting as being a lot, so...
Commissioner Gray had mentioned a couple of times, me at least, I don't know if he mentioned it to you guys, that their... I think NAGS had lowered the speed limit in a lot of their neighborhoods.
Yeah.
Twenty-five to twenty, and that, maybe that would factor into this conversation as well.
I plan to speak about that at one of Commissioner's agenda tonight.
All right, good deal. So, yeah, so I'm not hearing a lot of strong opinions one way or the other, trying to give Debbie and the crew the input they have asked for.
I am in support of exploring, I did more, but I think with Manio having their rules in place, maybe, I hate to kick the can down the road, but maybe give it some time to collect data, see what's working, see what's not, use it as a case study. And maybe in next quarter or four months or six months, we can bring this topic back up and kind of look at what they're doing and maybe you can make a little more of an informed decision then. Because of the registration and the work put on the town is kind of where I'm getting started in my head.
The risk of the work.
How big of a burden is it on whichever department is tasked with handling these registrations?
Yeah. Is the revenue going to be enough to cover it? Twenty-five dollars, probably not, right?
So, you know, at least we have some, you know, some to learn from and kind of see how that goes and bring it back up at a later date.
Right, I think if I was going to give staff any other advice, it might be that while these two are a good bookend, I'm sure this is a wheel that doesn't need to be reinvented, that they're beach towns and maybe other parts of the state also that we can...
And we do.
Yeah. A big five.
Right, I just didn't want to inundate you with all of those. We're just needing some guidance on mainstream to very unique. DUCs is the only one we were able to find in North Carolina that didn't have... They have recommendations.
Right, some recommendations, not actual ordinances.
Well, and similar to the e-bikes, it does... It does make sense to sort of model something similar to what our neighboring towns are doing so that we're all...
Somewhere between those two.
And DUC is like that why? Because they want to be able to rent them out immediately.
They... DUC does not have any municipal streets. They're all private. So you've got NC-12, you've got DOT...
They have no statute or authority to regulate.
And they're not allowed to own NC-12. You can cross to get to the other side. But the town does not maintain any of those streets.
Does it also... Well, does it also have something to do with the rental business of the actual carts? Because there are like a number of businesses that rent them out there, so you can simply, you know, there's no restriction, you can just rent them.
Sure, I mean, obviously, if there's no involvement with the town, you just rent it or if you're coming... I know the police department gets a lot of calls in the summer from people that are vacationing wanting to know what our requirements are.
Well, I'm just asking if there's...
So that way there are none, so yeah, it's easy.
So there's existing businesses, then they might have put some pressure on the town to say, hey, we like the way this is going right now without restriction.
I don't know. I don't know if DUC has golf cart rental businesses.
Oh, yeah, they definitely do, yeah.
It's like giving nodding to the vendor in the back, isn't it?
Okay.
Interesting. Yeah. Kill Bill Hills is, you know, all the towns on the Outer Banks have their own unique character. We are blessed and cursed with being the center of everything. We've got to go through here to go everywhere. We have the highest density of locals and tourism homes, you know, seven thousand residents and I don't know what the number is now, fifty thousand folks on a given weekend in the summer. So a little tougher when it's dense rather than a lot of private streets in DUC and of course, Manio is quaint and has a lot of space away from the highway there.
I like John's idea. I mean, I think tabling this to the point where we can get to see how that's working over there or ask some people how that's working and then, you know, it makes good sense, there's no reason to rush. We've waited this long to have anything. But, you know, before the summer, to have something before the summer would be good, you know?
Right, right. And the kind of the use cases, people want to take these to go to the beach, I would imagine. So the question is crossing the bypass or all that sort of thing.
Do you think...
They've only ever really considered west side really at this point, but...
Right, right. Do you think you'll have to add an actual employee if we register that, have registrations on?
It's going to be a large workload. And I think the other issue, and it'd be interesting to see how Manio is going to address this, is the time to get it registered and have it inspected, is that Monday through Friday during office hours when your vacationers are coming in on Saturdays and/or Sundays? And that's when they're going to want to start using it.
But you don't think that... Do you think... So you think the revenue will not be the expense?
Oh, no.
Okay. So it's really not money-making?
It's not, no.
You charge five hundred dollars a piece. Or twenty dollars a day.
Now, that is one of the things that we do see in some of the southern beaches areas. They charge more for, kind of like NAGS has doing with the beach driving, they charge more for non-resident visitor visit than they do the...
That's another thing we can research too, is the more you could make a process that's less labor-intensive and something that could be done remotely before people got here, if we were going to go down this path.
They charge a large amount, right, for that out area?
It was larger. I can't give you an amount, but it was considerably more, kind of like the permitting for the beach driving.
If you don't have the right, you know, people to inspect them and so on and so forth, I mean, I can see it as a nightmare. Because you're going to have kids driving them and you're going to have them driving all over everywhere and you're not going to be able to determine, you know, what's a license and what's non-licensed. So I think that what John's talking about, let's see what Manio runs into with their ordinance. And I guess we're saying we want staff to do that, to check with Manio and find out. And at the same time, try to figure out what kind of manpower needs you would incur with this. Because I could proceed to additional people. Chief? Does that sound about right?
Yes, sir. I mean, if we were to take over the licensing or the inspection process, and then we haven't even talked about enforcing yet.
Right.
You know, when you're talking about kids driving a golf cart around and we stop them, you know, we can't arrest them, we can't do anything, we have to wait for the parents to get there, call the parents, and it's an officer off the street and it's...
Right. I think that what we need to do is have staff look at that aspect of it too. And they come back with what they see from Manio and then they can present us what they researched and what they found.
Sounds like a plan. I think, yeah. The study on revenue and cost is always smart whenever you're making any rules, you want to know what it's going to... Rampations on the inputs and the outputs.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any new business?
Yes, sir.
Committee reports. Anything new?
I have a meeting this coming Thursday, but there is... They did release the resident survey for the long-term planning, so if anyone has...
See that on your inbox?
Yeah, I think, Michael, you were going to say after the release. Yes, okay. Okay. So, and maybe you all could just share it, if we could all just share it on social media so it gets thrown out.
For you kids who are going, what's going on? There's this thing called the Sunshine List. You can go on the website and sign up so you can email.
This, yes, and then the Sidewalk Grant. We did get that, so that's great. And the funding was... The funding was pretty good for that.
Very good.
Yep.
Good job.
Yes, that's great.
Thanks for the hard work on that, those applications to DUCs.
Yes, yeah.
The package.
Did great. Actually, I ran into camera while he was dropping it off. I happened to be there.
Hand-delivered.
Exactly.
Make sure it gets there.
Right, right. And then, yeah, so I have a meeting this coming Monday, so I'm sure there'll be more, or this coming Thursday, so I'm sure there'll be more for that.
Sounds good. What about you?
Nothing. I would just like to share that Sue and I got to attend the Halloween parade, weekend for Halloween, right over here at Frog Con, and how much fun that was. And I was really glad to see it. There wasn't a lot of vendors there, so I was seeing Kelly a huge amount of gratitude for getting the candy ready. Because there was a lot of hands and not a lot of targets, so we got ready pretty hard. Sue saved the day and it was a lot of fun. It was also nice to talk about the CACU and a lot of people who hadn't heard of it before. There was a lot of interested people and it was a very nice time.
Yeah, that was a great time. I have got some drone pictures of it. Had to be a judge, that was terribly difficult. There were a lot of really great costumes, particularly in the, like, the group costumes, where like families dressed all together. I wanted to give out ten awards. They were all really great, some really great ones. There was one gal who had a homemade puppet that wrapped... It looked like it was wrapped around her, but so she had like a fake arm, but she was also talking to this puppet. It looked like, oh, that thing must have been really expensive. Like, no, no, she made it herself. Well, yeah, well, she's getting the award, that's...
The luck dragon.
It was like a dragon.
It was a luck dragon from Neverending Store. I'm that big of a nerd. I know what a dragon is. Yes, it was a tough one. I feel the winners were pretty deserving. I was paying attention.
And you're right, we had to re-review in a couple of times one of those votes on that.
You were picking two or three people. So tough, so tough. The little kids in the green outfits, they had like flag saucers over there, umbrellas, so freaking cute. Yeah, I miss all the little kids. Grandkids taking theirs, you know? My sons are just cringing, they just... All right, any other committee reports? All right, anyone to jump right into Commissioner's agenda? I think you said you had something to talk about?
I do. I've had a lot of residents come to me and talk about the speed limit on the west side of town. And they've indicated that they would like to see a reduction in the speed limit from twenty-five to twenty mile an hour. I reached out to the police department and I think we all know, we've got a problem on Third Street after we did the improvements. Everybody kind of thinks it's a racetrack and they just fly. And I got some numbers about citizen complaints that were called in to the police department. In 2020, they had four calls. And in 2021, they had five calls. In 2022, they had twenty-three calls. So, I mean, that pretty well demonstrates that people are thinking there's a huge problem I've had a couple of people from Third Street. Then I said, well, let me check around with other areas. So I checked with my neighborhood and almost everybody I talked to in my neighborhood said, oh, yeah, you need to do that because people are flying. Whether it will cause them to not speed, I don't know. But I think it at least puts everybody on notice that, hey, wait a minute, you know, we're watching this and we're going to try to make some efforts to stop the speeding and recklessness that's going on in the town. But here's what I would like to do, and I would hope the board would consider doing this. I'd like to have this put, the reduction put on the agenda for the next meeting. And that would allow people to come in and comment, opposition support, whatever, and look at reducing the speed limit on the west side residential areas, you know, all the streets on the west side. Also have staff figure out a cost estimate of what it would take to fix the sign. Yeah, well, I don't know. I thought at first that you would have to change all the signs, but then I got thinking back, I said, wait a minute. When I was in the Ferry Division, we had a lot of schedule changes. And what we would do is just take a vinyl sticker and put it on there. And it saved a lot of money. So we could do that possibly if the board decides that we want to go this route. You could put a zero over the five and you're done. So, but...
Sure, there's some rules about it.
Yeah, if the board would approve, I'd like to have that put on the agenda for our next meeting. Yeah, if, if the board, um, would approve, I, I'd like to have that put on the agenda for our next meeting.
I, uh, I like the idea a lot, uh, in my time with this board, we've got a bunch of complaints from Ocean Acres and Orange Street. There's others, Bay Drive is, is also have opportunity there, so, uh, that's a good idea, I'm in support of it.
Two more of you?
I'll weigh in, I mean, I think, um, you know, obviously it's a small move, but I think it could lend to, um, those reduced speeds in the, in the residential areas, so, you know, I mean, that was just gonna have a cost, just like everything else, but, it could, it has been, you know, a problem, I think it might be more of a problem in our area once, once there's some more commercial businesses popping up. We know there's some new stuff coming to the town, so we're gonna have people using these back roads instead of, you know, instead of the bypass and, yeah, I would say, I've noticed on Bay where I live, of course, that has become sort of like, almost like a pseudo beach road, like, just running, people running around town using that road as, as sort of a fast road. So, yeah, I mean, considering people go a few miles over the limit all the time, might bring someone going from tw- you know, ten over in the, in a third, twenty-five to ten over in the twenty, you know, then at least they're in the twenty, thirty range, you know, so.
Or speed five miles an hour less.
Yes, exactly, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to say.
Thirty-five or drop to thirty.
That's what I'm trying to say, yeah, so.
Thoughts?
I, I would definitely agree with that, I mean, I walk almost every single day in the, in this area, and you see it every day. Could probably pick out five or six cars that are going way faster than twenty-five, probably close to forty. Um, so, I definitely think.
And it's different with the Airbnbs, you know, I think that's part of it too, right?
Well, and, and people, you know, we're just denser, we have more people now, and, you know, and you, at the same time, you have more people out walking and trying to, you know, bikes, and, and maybe it's in, maybe the e-bike can somehow factor into that, you know, so.
I hope they'll bring that same speed limit today.
And essentially like.
I mean, if they're supposed to follow the rules of.
And Naxxet.
Yeah, exactly.
And Naxxet did this, is that right?
Yeah, Naxxet did this, I think, as well, on their website, they, they reduced the speed limit.
Within the last year, so we could also check with them and see how that's been going.
Yeah, I, I, I think I remember hearing that.
Maybe I'll send tomorrow.
Yeah.
Lots of, I'm gonna be a talking one at this lunch. You know, if this does come to pass, updating speed limits outside of town would make a wonderful Eagle project.
Yeah.
Really, really good, I see a lot of evil hands in the, in the audience today, we could, uh, we could set up, find a way to make that happen.
Let's make sure that Steve's involved in that coordination.
Hey, Mr. Steve.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it sounds like we have the will to consider it, I'll put my two cents in that I, I do, uh, I'm always a little cautious about remedies without data, I'm a data guy. So I'm sure that, I know that NC DOT and the National, you know, Highway Safety Commission and all sorts of folks have written thousands and thousands of pages on when and where, how speed limits affect actual speeding, and what remedies have the biggest bang for the buck, whether it's those electronic signs that we have a number of. Um, you know, maybe we need to invest a little bit more on those deterrent factors, um, you know, children to play kind of signs, uh, education, um, you know, public shaming, no, just kidding. There are, there are lots of tools in the toolbox, and so I just don't wanna rush into that, so I definitely would ask staff to, to, uh, do the, the great work they always do, which is finding the, the resources that will help us make smart decisions.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll bring that up, the other thought too is just public sentiment, you know, twenty-three sounds like a lot when it's compared to five, but it's also small compared to, you know, fifty thousand people here every week, and seven thousand people that live here, and six thousand nine hundred and ninety of them didn't say anything. So, um, maybe, I don't know, I don't know whether the town is fond of, um, surveys or, you know, send out an email to yes, no, thumbs up, thumbs down, just to take the.
Here's the point, because twenty is quite slow, quite slow.
It's not, it's not a big percentage of the population.
It's not easy to go twenty, no, I mean.
Oh, twenty miles an hour, right.
Going twenty is.
Idling.
Basically can't touch the gas.
My motorcycle guy, can you go that slow?
I mean, I can run a bike twenty-four, I think, I can run my bike twenty-four, twenty-five, so.
True.
Sure, Jack can.
My dog pulled me on his skateboard fast, and. All right, so I think we have niceness.
December, the December meeting?
Be fine.
Okay, because we had talked, I didn't know if you, you had mentioned maybe doing it in January, would you prefer to do it at the next meeting?
Yeah, next meeting would be fine.
All right, super, and so the public will know if they have a strong feeling either way.
Yeah.
Come weigh in.
That'll give them an opportunity to see it and voice their opinion.
Correct, I always like that.
Okay.
All right, any, uh, other commissioners have an agenda they'd like to speak about?
I got something. One thing that, um, we've discussed numerous times, uh, as a board, and something Mayor you brought up a few times, is the appearance of one fifty-eight has a modus, and, and since we've had all of this road construction, it's really kinda popped to me a little bit more. Um, I've always been supportive of the idea of, of maybe looking at it once or twice a year. We, as a town, go up one fifty-eight and trim along the curves, do some basic landscaping nearby, and some businesses do a really good job, we wouldn't have to do anything. But others do a terrible job and it looks bad, and, uh, maybe y'all used the word patchy, that's a little, uh, safer. But I, I just wanted to bounce aside of the board, maybe taking this one step beyond discussion and maybe asking staff to, in the next fiscal year, to plan on one to two cleanups.
We already are doing, a couple times a year, but I, I'm with you on whatever we're doing now is better than it used to be, but I think we could go farther.
Yeah, something maybe, I think we could discuss before the fiscal year begins, budget into ratcheting that up some more, so, um, town looks nicer. You know, I think about how beautiful this campus is and around here, and, you know, maybe we could apply those standards to the bypass as well.
Yeah, I've had some meetings with Steve about it, we've talked to different vendors, had, uh, it's been challenging finding a vendor locally that has all the special equipment and certain permits, because there's, you wouldn't believe these kind of technicalities of like, which herbicides you could use that might have some conflict with private fertilizing and pesticides and herbicides and stuff like that, so it's tech, it's technical. So we may end up having to use a vendor from out of state even, so it gets pricey.
We have one now, right?
Yeah, we do, yeah.
We have, we have a vendor that we call in to do our cutting and everything. Comes the guy with the answers.
Steve can address some of the issues, as the mayor's alluded to.
Yeah, we spent a lot of time with Ross and then meeting with, um, two or three local contractors, and then contacting two or three from outside the area. And it's difficult because there's such variability of what each property owner is doing or not doing. There's no consistency of irrigation, so any type of chemical program, weed control, fertilization, without consistent water, the contractors just said, no, that's a non-starter, you gotta have water, if we have a summer drought and we put, uh, broadly herbicide out, fertilizer, we could kill everything, you know, we gotta have that irrigation to do any type of, um, lawn maintenance, uh, fertilizing weed control program. And then, so, so that was out, we are currently doing the mowing, we do five supplemental passes in between the DOT passes. Uh, our supplemental passes include the string trimming and the litter pickup, um, the DOT ma- passes are with a flannel mower, which is just a tractor and shreds up the trash, and there's no string trimming, they get close to the poles, but not very close. So our passes are rotary mowers, they're picking up the bags of debris, they're string trimming around all the signposts and utility poles, and that string trimming really makes our passes stand out. And that's using the DOT contractor, that's five passes a year, we've also used a local contractor to edge the sidewalk. Um, and that's been a once a year, kinda every other year thing for about the past three years. Um, in the initial time to get it edged, we were hoping it would stimulate all the private contractors to, to take on, to see how nice it looked.
Keep it though.
And then you got, example, the dirt center, that we do that, and then they stop at the right of way line, and they, they don't, they abandoned it completely, any maintenance out there in that corridor, so it's, it's a little bit frustrating, you try to take an extra step and, and, and show them how nice it can look and get the opposite effect. The additional mowing we talked about, the, those contractors in Virginia Beach, they couldn't get enough staff, their current staff was working seven days a week. They weren't willing to, to, to take on anything, so we looked, tried to get something set up back in April to, to, to come to you with some funding, and, and we couldn't get anybody, uh, because of the traffic, you know, the concerns about the, the weed control and the staff and equipment shortages, nobody was interested, they, they were, they were cutting accounts. They were eliminating the slow pay and that kind of thing, and really picking and choosing. Um, regarding the curbing, nobody, we're edging the sidewalk, we're not edging the curb. When you get within, I think it's four feet of that fifty mile an hour travel lane, you get a whole bunch of safety requirements. So basically, in order to edge that or clean the gutter pan, you gotta have a lane closure. So if you start talking about in-season lane closures, uh, that raised some other alarms too with DOT and, and what they wanna allow or not allow. Now, in the off-season, um, you could probably get away with a lane closure, but it, it's, it's, you, you know what we've got with the, the paving lane closure now and traffic backing up, so, um, DOT is supposed to clean the gutter pan three times a year. They have a hard time getting contractors and, and getting that, I think we're getting maybe once a year, but there's, there's a rolling lane closure, and they use a regional contractor that does all the bridges and, and other curbing gutters. So it's been a difficult, we, like I said, we developed a scope of services and worked with Ross on, on what could happen, and, um, it was just, it was very difficult.
It's tricky, you know, because we, you know, when I think about this topic, and maybe no one's known all these years, I've been banging this drum for like twenty years now. I mean, I grew up on RV bases where there's never a blade of grass out of place, everything is always trimmed, everything, there's never dirt in the gur- in the gutter, ever. But I also know that when I, my kids were young, we'd take them down to Kissimmee, Florida, or Orlando, where there's six lane highways everywhere you go, and everything is not only edged and not a leaf out of place, but there's lighting and landscaping and water sprinklers and, I mean, they, they put on a show on the media because they're a tourism business and that's how they roll, and that's how Kissimmee became the powerhouse that it is. It was just Orlando adjacent, Nowhereville until they made that investment, so I, I've been making this case all along that like, yeah, it's difficult, and it costs money, I just think it should be a higher priority, and, you know, with a little more money, a little more time, a little more creativity, yeah, sure, it can be done, it's done all over the world, and not just in Florida, but, and you, in Florida, you almost have to do it because things grow, so it would just grow out over the road if you didn't stop it, right, down there, they got so much water and, uh, fertile land, but you're right, here, you know, I am now in a place with no sprinkler, where my previous house had a sprinkler, and, yeah, you can't do much with it, that's frickery. So I get that, so, uh, hey, I'd even be curious to know if we started a, picked a favorite spot, put some irrigation in, um, you know, how long would it take to do six miles, the next twenty years, but, uh, at least we could get started on it.
And I wonder if you've got any ideas, is there a way to try to motivate, um, the, the business community that fronts one fifty-eight to take a little more pride and ownership and not abandon that strip? I mean, because when you ride down there, you see the businesses that, that take pride, it's beautiful.
Yeah.
And you see other ones that, if they cut once a month, um, you know, we're lucky, so.
I think that's maybe something the Community Appearance Commission could discuss, it's our, what we're supposed to do, and maybe Sue and I can bring that through our next meeting, is how to encourage that right behavior, maybe drafting letters or, I don't know, something along those lines, but it could be something that we take back to the CAC and bring a recommendation back to this board for maybe, um, how to encourage those right behaviors like you discussed.
I'll make chocolate chip cookies for anybody who starts cleaning their.
I think John's got a great idea, you know, that, um, when they, when they come in and they do the mowing and, and the trimming, it, it looks great. I think we need to do more, um, and so I'm, I support his, um, his effort to have staff put together some sort of, uh, plan on how to accomplish that and come back to us, um, I think it's a good idea, John.
Since the road construction started, it, and we discussed it two months ago, uh, it's just really, seeing the changes and seeing the improvements, you see the, the issues too, that just kind of pop, come out. Man, I wish we could just find that way to address that.
It's that gutter, the gutter that gets me when I drive by in the.
Treming the curb, yeah, the gutter, it, it really.
My little pet peeve, I get it.
And the fact we see the beautiful ones next to the opportunities, and how can we, how can we fix it?
Yeah, I like it. You know, like you said, rolling lane closures, six in the morning, not too bad, you know, there's, there's a way to get it done. Um, but yeah, thank you for that, I, you know, you'll have a fully in that camp, so, yeah, we'll, we'll be curious to see what.
Seems like we're throwing a lot of devils right tonight.
I have another, um, commissioner comment, since we have such, uh, wonderful participation, and I know the scouts got school tomorrow. Can we kind of take a minute and invite the scouts up as a group for a group picture, maybe with you, Mayor, and, and David's certificate? So they don't have to, I mean, it's after seven, it's school day tomorrow, they don't have to stay for the whole meeting, and we can kind of really, uh, acknowledge tonight's moment a little bit more, if you all don't.
You guys are real troopers coming to this boring, boring meeting.
Now, one scout has to stay for the whole duration, but the rest of them, we can, we'll let them adjourn, so, no, we got one for.
You guys want to come in? Yeah?
Yeah, come on out. I'd say up there, maybe in front of the town, in one of the, you know.
Can't get them all in? Step back. Can y'all come up?
Screeching.
Scooch in.
The board could stay behind them.
Yeah, we could, the board could stay behind them.
The scouts could step up, the board can come behind them.
Yeah.
Scouts, take one tip over.
Boy, that was a star game, but.
Look at me. Look at me.
We're not gonna get you.
Look at me.
There we go, look at Michael. There we go.
Tell me.
Tell me, now, Michael.
Look at me.
Oh, no, no. All this being on the dad. All this being on the dad. With mom and dad. Please. Please, thanks. There you go, thanks.
Congratulations again.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks again. Stay anyway.
Stay anyway, I gave you guys an exit.
We're, we're almost to the end here.
I know we got one scout.
Thank you all.
Yeah, now one of them is not going anywhere.
Go up this box, because I have like, there's ten, just gotta. Jackets for another kid, patches all the time.
Boxes with patches.
Oh, we're here all night, we're in time with the service store.
Remember doing that with my dad, too.
Pouring lead in the bottom of them?
Yeah, and it had bad bad.
It threw a little graphite, so when it was going down that track, it was constantly feeding the wheels.
Engineering marvel over here, nothing less. Alrighty, uh, I think you all covered all the things I was gonna cover, so there's no mayor's agenda, we'll jump right to, ooh, town manager's agenda.
Yes, sir, not tonight.
Always nice, town attorney is out.
Under the weather, he apologizes.
Hope he feels, hope he feels better.
Pass that on, thank you.
Hope he gets better soon, um, let's see, consent agenda.
Yes, sir, um, due items this evening, beginning with the minutes from October tenth, twenty twenty-two, um, regular meeting, and then the October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, to a work session of the planning board. The September monthly report, um, got four budget amendments, three budget amendments and one budget transfer. Budget amendments to record, um, the incumbents outstanding at six thirty, twenty twenty-two. Appropriate funds for the canal debris removal project, and to record the grant that, um, we received through the North Carolina Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services, and also, um, there again, to shout out to Steve Albright and his team for putting that grant together, awesome, um, amount. And number four is to appropriate funds to the purpose of meters and supplies for installation and repairing meters. And then the budget transfer is a transfer covering training for animal control officers, um, as we've talked about in the past, this is where, um, the budget ordinance allows that budget officer can transfer money between, um, divisions within the department, such as police and animal control. Um, it just has to be reported to the board commissioners at the next meeting. Excuse me, um, contract for legal services, this is to update the, um, legal agreement between Sharp, Graham, and Akron, and Arnell. The last time that was done was in twenty sixteen. The adoption of the Town Code Supplement eighteen, approval of consent agenda will record the approval of this ordinance. Senatarians Society Resolution, I think the mayor presented this, this resolution to Ms. Hill, um, who turned a hundred and one October the twenty-ninth, um, Lady Wilma has been introduced into the society, and approval of consent agenda will, um, um, approve the resolution that, that did that. Lastly, um, scheduling a public hearing for proposed zoning amendment, off-street parking and loading, creating parking and driveway requirements for emergency services facility. Recommend this to be set for Monday, December the twelfth, at twenty, uh, twenty twenty-two at sixteen a.m. Approval of consent agenda will schedule this, um, for public hearing, staff recommends approval of consent agenda as presented, and a motion would be in order, and appreciated.
Salute.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed name? Okay, the answer to the consent agenda. Well, that leads us to our second public comment, so the diehards are to stay with us. Holding out for second public comment, now you're mine. That was, that was the best pitch I could give for it. Going once, going twice. All right, we are done with public comments, um, thanks again to the folks who spoke earlier, most of whom have, I guess, thrown. So, uh, that's our last item, fellas, so, um, folks, so, looking for one more motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All right, thank you all for coming.